Call to order, the Town of North Branford, WPCA and Town Council meeting, Tuesday, August 1st, 2023 at 7:05 PM. Start with the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. Thanks for coming on in this beautiful Wednesday, the first of August. Or Tuesday, Tuesday, does that mean Tuesday? Okay, let's see.
Such a good Tuesday.
Such a good Tuesday, it's almost must say. All right. Okay. All right, if you would.
Hi, Councillor May.
Here.
Councillor Code.
Here.
Councillor Paladino.
Here.
Councillor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Felicia.
Here.
Deputy Mayor DePano.
Here.
Mayor DeSoto.
Present. Thank you. All right, on to community, we don't have a. There we are, the meeting's been a little bit backwards. On to item two, community events and presentations. We're going to present a plaque to Patty Schiffer, 31 years of service.
Mr. Mayor, tonight we're recognizing Patty Schiffer, our account clerk in the Finance Department, handling accounts payable, who's retiring from town service effective August 4th, which is this Friday. That date is going to mark exactly 15 years for Patty in her role at the Finance Department, but she served the Town of North Branford much longer. She came to us in November of 1992, working for the Board of Education, managing the Stanley T. Williams Cafeteria, and then as the NBIS Cafeteria Manager through February of 2000. She then took on the position of dispatcher with the North Branford Police Department, where she remained until August of 2008, when she took her current role with Finance. Her ties to our town are strong. She's lived in North Branford for 20 years, raised her children here, and is proud that they are all graduates of our school system. While she moved away, after they were grown, she remained connected to our town. Patty's given the town 31 years, and she's been an extremely valuable part of our team here. I've personally come to appreciate her important contributions and her subversive sense of humor, and what we do here and how we do it. And she will be missed very much, and I know you join me in wishing you the best for this new chapter of her life. So we offer congratulations to Patty.
Round of applause. Patty, thank you so much, 31 years with this town. God bless you.
Should we do a photo like we did last night with everybody?
You folks. Marie, yes, go that way here, Marie.
This way.
Nick, that way here. Do we have the picture in one place? On three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. All right, Patty, again, thank you so very much. Appreciate you and your service to the town. Okay, on to item three, minutes of previous meeting. I'm sorry?
In the attendance, it doesn't list Councilman Code and Councilman Paladino, and I believe both of them were present at the last meeting, so.
For the July 18th, 2023 special meeting? Okay. Item A. So we'll accept the meeting with that amendment. Are there any other amendments to the meeting?
Sound moved.
Okay, motion by Councillor Diamond.
Second.
Second by Councillor Angeloni. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Perfect, thank you so much. Okay, on to the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Item four, correspondence and citizen statements and petitions. Do we have any? Seeing none. On to item five, unfinished business. There is also none there. On to item six, news business, discussion in action. Item A, request to connect to sanitary sewers at 146 Branford Road, map 5, lot 56. Hello, Victor, how are you, sir?
Good evening. Hi, Victor Benny, for the record, this one might look familiar for a reason. There's a memorandum in your packet from me to the Town Manager dated June 14th, 2023, which explains that the request to connect procedure that I presented to the WPCA for this property wasn't necessary. I happened to review the project with previous Town Engineer Kurt Weiss, when he happened to stop by shortly after this approval by the WPCA. And Kurt led me to some additional information on file at the Engineering Department that indicated that this property had already satisfied the assessment requirement. So it kind of makes it so we're at a point where the approval procedure that, or the connection procedure that you approved in May was not necessary, and that includes the $12,300 special connection fee. So obviously, I'd like to apologize to you folks for basically, I guess, wasting your time on this. But I think, you know, and for me, the most important thing was finding out at, you know, this opportune time with Kurt and not charging the applicant the $12,300 special connection fee. So I do have a draft motion that you could consider to rescind that approval and the special connection fee. Obviously, though, if you have any questions first on this, if I haven't explained it well enough, you have me to answer that.
That's why I asked during that meeting, because I lived on Branford, and I know that we were all charged that back there. And I had asked, well, what happens if you, you know?
Right.
Because we were charging him, but I thought we had all paid at that time when it went through. But it was so long ago, it was more than 20 years, and so whatever we were paying was already done in the town.
Right, so it was a little tricky for me, and Anthony helped me out, because we were in the Town Clerk's Office reviewing all of those, you know, books on file that show who paid and the process of making payments. But Kurt's list that he had in the Engineering Department were those properties that probably just paid upfront the full amount, and there was no reason for them to file in the Clerk's Office to go through that payment procedure process. So that's where I got hung up a little bit.
Right, because you could pay over time at the time.
I have all the lists now to cross-reference all this stuff.
And now you know, see? It's a good thing it happened, because now you know, if it happens again, we have another source to look at.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, we'll accept the motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion whereas the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority has previously approved the proposal to connect the existing property known as 146 Branford Road to the existing sanitary sewers in Branford Road at its regular meeting held on May 23rd, 2023. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the North Branford WPCA rescinds the previously required special connection approval of 5/23/23, including the $12,300 special connection fee, understanding that the property in question had previously satisfied the requirements of the original assessment.
Okay. Second. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councillor Angeloni, second by Deputy Mayor DePano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you very much. On to item B, scheduling of Special Water Pollution Control Authority Meeting and Public Hearing for Sewer Works Operating Budget and Proposed User Fee, FY 2023/2024.
Good evening again. So each year, the WPCA schedules a public hearing date to adopt the sewer user fees for the new budget year. We typically request the public hearing to happen that second meeting in September, and that allows us time to analyze the different projected costs coming in, especially those costs coming in from the three entities that we send flows to and allow them to go through their budgeting process before we take full note of all those different costs coming in from those different entities. So that works out to that second meeting in September, where we typically don't have a WPCA meeting. So we request that we have the public hearing on the second meeting in September.
And that gives you enough time, because our sewer bills due October 1st, are they?
I think it comes out to October 1st, yes.
It's always tight, but we need, a lot of the towns don't provide the information in a timely fashion. So it's constantly the last minute numbers. We'll try to push it out as far as possible. Tonight's bill will go out on the 1st of October, and it's the best we can do based on the way the calendar falls and the information comes from the other three towns.
Okay.
There's a little bit of coordination with myself and the other, you know, town people that are managing their and overseeing their WPCAs through this process. And I'm always, you know, kind of begging to, please, we need this by, they understand, we need it by October 1st, by that second meeting in September. So we cut it close, but it usually works out.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford WPCA schedules a Special Water Pollution Control Authority Meeting on Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, and further, that the North Branford WPCA, acting as the sewer authority for the town pursuant to CGS 7-255, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, at 7:15 PM at the North Branford Town Hall, 909 Foxen Road, for the purpose of receiving public input on the Sewer Works operating budget and the proposed sewer use fees for the 2023/24 fiscal year.
Okay, we can move your bike. Councillor Angeloni, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Diamond. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Normally, we do a public hearing at 7:30 PM. Why did the deviation to 7:15? Every, for two years, every time we have it, even tonight, we have a public hearing, 7:30 PM, not 7:15.
Because it's WPCA, which is at the beginning of the meeting? It's before the council meeting?
Oh, okay, that explains, that was my question.
There we are, there's the answer.
I am now informed. What's the difference? Okay.
I learned that with you. Okay, thank you very much. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Okay, on to the regular Town Council meeting. Item seven, reports of committees, boards and commissions. Item A, Economic Development Commission?
Next meeting is Monday, August 7th.
All right, item B, Parks and Recreation?
Okay, so Park and Rec met last week, and so the directors, June, at a glance, for Park and Rec, they are still going strong. They served over 300 meals. Their summer camp program started, and there is a waitlist for every week so far in the program. They had 13 senior programs, 31 grocery transportations, 15 rec programs, and three bus trips. They had the senior picnic. They have started the adult co-ed softball. They have eight teams this year. They are also going back and doing the farm-to-family food boxes, which they get the food boxes from the farms in town, and they give them out. And then they had a local Heroes Night on July 12th, it was, in cooperation with the library. So there's a lot of stuff going on in Park and Rec. And of course, anyone driving down 22 and going past the Augur Park will see that the field is taking shape for the Poco Fest, which is this weekend. And just in being there and driving by, the grounds are the fullest I have ever seen them so far, with food vendors and just where the tents are going and everything else. It is very full, so that's a good sign. And the weather is supposed to be at least 20 degrees cooler than last year. So that will be in itself the best news of the weekend. So lots of new things planned. Actually, we have, Channel 8 has reached out, and the Town Manager and the Director of Park and Rec will be on Thursday morning on their, they do a segment from 10 to 11, so they'll be on that segment. And Channel 3 is coming to the Poco Grounds on Friday morning to do a segment for their show that they do from 9 to 10.
So is Jeff going to be there?
No, no, I'm not. Mike's better for the.
So we're getting a lot of good press, so the weather's supposed to be very nice. We're, you know, looking forward to all the new things, and of course, on Saturday night, the fireworks.
I'll be there, I'll work every day.
I'm not going to put into formal motion, because I don't want to debate this.
Okay.
But I strongly recommend that the mayor and the town attorney take a helicopter ride.
We already have the town attorney doing that. I'm not sure if the mayor's willing to take that. I've already taken enough for this town, not doing that.
I didn't make the motion, I made the request.
Remember where those helicopters come from? The back of the trailer truck that screwed on? I'm not really sure about that. I'm not the lightest I've ever been. So I'm not sure the payload on that helicopter is going to take this. Okay.
And as the Deputy Mayor just reminded me, because as anyone wishing to volunteer, we will gladly take volunteers. You can go to the website, northbranfordpocofestival.com, and there's a form on there under volunteers. We will take volunteers for any and all shifts all weekend, so we are looking for volunteers. We're very gracious, very happy the high school sports teams have volunteered, and they will be helping us cover shifts every day, but we still need more volunteers, so.
So you need some volunteers?
Council has been very gracious and volunteered along with the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager, so I'm very happy that all of you have.
Oh, we've worked hard into this too, huh?
Yeah, I did.
That's very good to hear.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Potter, you coming in? You have a shift?
I'm retired.
Oh, got you.
And I just want to say, we could not do this festival without our Public Works Department. Franny, Dan and his team have been doing tireless amounts of work, helping us get the site up and ready, and of course, all of our sponsors. We have a ton, a lot of sponsors this year. We had more sponsors come on, even from out of town donating, which is great for us. And we have a record number of food vendors this year. It's almost double from last year.
And we have fireworks, so Friday night, great band, fireworks on Saturday night, also another great band, a local band.
Yep, Juice Box is playing.
Juice Box. The Gagliardi's here in town, which I grew up near me, so I'm excited to see them play. And then on Sunday, we have the car show. So if you have a car 1980 or older that you'd like to display and come, it's always a great time. We're going to have, we'd like the more the merrier. We have some really neat trophies from what I've been told, so they're unique to the Poco, in Poco fashion, so we're looking forward to seeing that materialize.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Obviously, Dan and Franny, thank you for all you guys do. You guys have all the shifts, so thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, all right, moving on, on to Police Commission.
No meeting?
No meeting, okay. Okay, on to item D, Fire Commission.
There was no meeting last month, lack of quorum due to vacations, and same thing this month, so.
Okay. All right, item E, Planning and Zoning Commission.
No meeting.
Okay. Item F, Finance Subcommittee, that's next week?
Yes.
Okay, so that's on, we're coming into that next week. Item G, Public Safety Commission Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Okay. And item H, CIWWA.
That meeting was canceled.
Okay. Why are you smiling? Why are you smiling? Some levity from that. Well, you know, it is July and August, so, you know, we do allow people to go on vacations, and we can choose a meeting later on, but we'll get back to these things as the year is growing. Okay, item A, Town Manager Report. Item A, general updates, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. We had a challenging first half of the day today with a power outage that impacted Town Hall, but as you can see, we are up and running now. Water infiltrated a branch connection between the road and Town Hall, which caused at least two of the three of them to fail. We closed our offices temporarily between 10 o'clock in the morning and 1 o'clock PM, while United illuminating affected repairs. Our staff were sent to remote locations at Atwater Library or Stanley T. Williams, and our tax and assessor staff set up a forward operating post at the North Branford Intermediate School Choir Room with a police officer as security. As this was the last day for residents to pay taxes without penalty, we needed to ensure continuity of service. Thankfully, power was restored and reopened Town Hall at 1 o'clock PM. I want to thank our Public Works and Police Departments for their response and proactivity during this event. The Board of Education, particularly Bruce Williams and Doug Handy for assisting with the setup of our tax department at NBIS. Dennis Pennone and Anthony Esposito assisted on the technology end of relocating our staff, as well as our Town Hall staff, who responded with cheerful flexibility on relocating today, particularly the team in our tax and assessors' office, who kept our services up and running all day without missing a beat, handling about 30 to 40 taxpayers in person. The event was a great learning experience in putting a remote action plan in place, and we have made note of things that were smooth and those that were less so to adjust and improve for the next similar event. Following up on that, speaking of outages, you will probably be aware, there was an outage in Northford on Friday. Last Friday evening, a downed tree on Middletown Avenue just south of Mill Pond Gathering took down electric wires, causing a small brush fire, blocking traffic in both directions, and causing a power outage throughout Northford Center. Wallingford Electric crews responded with power returning to Northford Center by late evening, but the electrical crew work necessitated power being lost to points north of the incident, up along Middletown Avenue, including several neighborhoods, including my own. Power was restored just after midnight, and the road was cleared soon after. Compliments go to our Fire and Police Departments for their quick response, as well as Public Works once again for theirs and their direct work with Wallingford Electric to ensure power restoration as quickly as possible. Update Poco, I think I defer to Councillor Angeloni on that. Again, I'm volunteering. I'll be at the Beer and Wine Tent Event on Friday night with the mayor. I am pretty sure that whatever I do is going to result in instructions to the people afterwards about what not to do, but I'll try to behave. But I'm looking forward to that, and I think that, you know, to echo what Councillor Angeloni said about the great work that the staff have been doing to make this Public Works, Park and Rec, the volunteers, and this is shaping up to, I think, be one of the best, if not the best. Don't want to jinx it, but it's shaping up to be an amazing event, and I think everybody's looking forward to it. The buzz is amazing about it. Animal Control Switchover. I wanted to advise you all that we've set a date for the transfer of ACO services from Branford to East Haven. Plan change of service will take place September 1st of 2023. It may be noted that the print article in the Haven Register on Saturday said we had already switched service. I called the Register for a correction on the online story, which now notes the date had yet to be set, which was accurate as of Saturday morning. Last Friday, our team, including me, Attorney Leclerc, Chief Halloran and Finance Director Esposito, met with Michelle Benevegna of the East Haven Mayor's Office, East Haven Animal Control Officers Emily Higgins and Owen Little to discuss the transition. We're currently working out the details of the policies to put in place relative to the communication with our dispatch and PD, plans to promote awareness of the changeover, and expect to be ready in advance of the September 1st date. The East Haven Animal Control Team will have a booth Saturday and Sunday at the Poco Festival to help introduce them to residents and get them some visibility and promote familiarity, so please be sure to stop by and greet them when you're there. Updates on the Two Towers, the Clintonville Tower. Verizon needs to go on the tower first before our equipment can go on, so we are waiting for Verizon to install Per Pyramid Network Services. The electrical subcontractor, CSB, is expecting the PO from Pyramid next week to do that. I spoke to Ray Vergotti last week of Homeland Towers. Last week, he was in my office, and I had a phone conversation with him today. He's informed me that the utility easement issue has been resolved there. You will recall that M&amp;T Bank holds the mortgage on the property and was denying the utility easement. The easement has now been granted and recorded, so we should be now closer to getting this up and running. The Tilcon Tower at 1 Forest Road, Pyramid Network Services has a building permit issued. However, late this afternoon, they submitted changes for that permit, but they'll be addressed in a timely fashion by our offices, and when that's squared away, they will only need to pull an electric permit, and then they'll be able to proceed. Flood damage reimbursements, as you know, we recently had some significant flash flooding associated with heavy downpours received from recent storm events. The state is collecting data on flood damage from communities associated with heavy rain and flooding between July 19th and 16th for possible submission to FEMA for reimbursements. We've submitted requests to the Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for damage associated with Walnut Lane and Lanes Pond Road area, which I'm sure most of the council members are aware of. This is in the information gathering phase, and we are hoping we might eventually see some revolt results and reimbursement on that, and I'll keep the council updated as this process unfolds. Paving. State crews are paving Forest Road, Route 22, from 6 PM to 6 AM, Tuesday to Thursday this week, and traffic will be down to one lane. Residents driving through this area during these times should expect delays. Thanks to our Police Chief Kevin Howren, who requested on our behalf that DOT subcontractors avoid paving this area during the Poco Festival, which starts Friday, so they'll be avoiding it during the Poco Festival, and we should be clear there.
Because traffic is going to be backed up the way it is anyway.
I mean, as it is, it's impacting, bringing some things in there, and we realize that.
Yeah, they're there right now. I drove by them coming here, and it was quite a backup, just pacing out to put the cones in.
Going home isn't going to be fun.
Yeah, go home. For those that are here, use Totucket, it's probably easier.
Town paving is also taking place this week. Phase two paving has begun on the following roads, and will continue throughout the week. Sierra Road, Lower Beach Road, Upper Beach Street, Upper Seal Road and Greystone Road. Rubber seal surface on the following roads is scheduled to begin the week of August 7th and continue throughout the week. Rose Lane, Maple Road, Tommy's Path, Judith Court, Surrey Drive, Holly Heights Drive, Old Forest Road, David Lane, St. Monica's Drive, Old Middletown Turpike and Firelight Place. I'd like to announce to all of you the departure of Anita Mancini, who has served for the past seven years as a staff accountant in the Finance Department. News is bittersweet, as I know we will all miss Anita and all she does for us, but she will be moving on to become Finance Director for the Town of Old Lime. I know you join me in expressing congratulations to her for this amazing opportunity for her as she readies for this new challenge that comes with this new and important role. And while I hate to lose good members of our team, I'm always thrilled to when they move on to bigger and better things. Anita started with us in April of 2016, working on a number of critical projects for the town, including converting to meet Connecticut's Uniform Chart of Accounts and our current Munis Financial and Payroll System. Her efforts, particularly on this latest Munis upgrade, can't be overstated. She worked many late hours and extra days, fought with the numerous bugs, and without her, and when I say bugs, I'm not talking about staff at Munis, but maybe I am. And without her, who knows where we would be with Munis today? She was also central to helping us through the year we went without a tax collector, assisting with their monthly reconciliations. Anita's last day will be August 18th, where she will be retiring from our service, and we will attempt to get her here before the council at upcoming meetings, so you can wish her well as she embarks on this new, exciting career journey.
That's great. Congratulations to Anita.
Is she here still? No, she left. She was here with Patty.
She was here, she left.
Business Under the Big Tent. The Town of North Branford and Economic Development Commission are partnering with the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce for a Business Under the Big Tent Reimagined Event. The Business to Business Community Engagement Event will take place this Thursday, August 3rd, from 5 PM to 7 PM at Guilford Savings Bank on Middletown Avenue in Northford. Featured speakers will include Rob Hodling, the Deputy Commissioner of Connecticut D E C D, and Charlie Rosa Bianca, the owner of Rosa Bianca Vineyards. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. I believe.
I have a question on the Town Manager's Report. I noticed what they're doing repaving on our main roads, maybe 80, 22, Mill Pond Avenue. I notice some towns, and even on the highway, they have those ribs on the side of the road or in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
Should I, if somebody's on the.
The rubble strips.
Do we have that anywhere in town, or can we?
We had them.
Can we get them?
We had them in the center of the.
Was it taken act of Congress?
They were actually, they were there, and what happened was, there was a lot of residents, because obviously, though we have a main road, we have a main road with a lot of residents on it. And there was, I believe, speaking correct, there was some complaints as to the amount of noise that it made for residents after hours. So I don't know if they're going. So I don't know if they're going back in or not.
They were taken out.
They were taken out on 22, yeah, they were taken out.
Didn't we vote on that at one council? When Mike Doody was here. Some of the houses are much closer.
To put them in?
Those are older, and they're allowed to be closer.
To discontinue it.
If somebody's in their bed sleeping or whatever, places, and it's 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, we're warning them, some driver hits those ribs.
It's a state road. They didn't have any sales. It's a state road. We don't have any say on it. My understanding was that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
Yeah, I think it was petitioned, but we had nothing to do with it.
Yeah, my understanding was that they were going to return it to the condition that it was, but I can follow up to that.
I can hear what.
I'm sorry. My understanding was that they were going to return it once they, when they repaved it to the condition it was in with the rumble strips. But I'll follow up with DOT and confirm that that's the case.
I recall us having a discussion at the council, and the, and the result of that was someone was going back to the state and saying, "We don't want them," because we had an option to have them or not have them.
That was for Route 80, but they moved to Route 80. But I, I think the police chief is, I think they're, the way the state said that they're going to, whatever was there is going back, but I think we're going to tell them that we don't want it. I'm not 100% sure of the end of the conversation. I don't want to speak for the chief, but.
Because they just recently took them out.
Yeah, to do this, you can't do this, this, this is not a pavement, it's pavement, but it's a thin layer, it's only five feet thick. So it's a pavement project. So that you could have the rumble strips in there to do it and take them out and put it back in.
Frank, what did they tell them?
What's that?
Rumbles. Rumble strips. Yeah, they rumble. Rumble strips, yeah.
Is there any way we could look into whether or not Route 80, 22? I'm not talking about the side roads, I'm talking about the main roads, because the main roads, a lot of times, are people that don't live in town or whatever. It may be a little bit different. I don't know, but it would certainly be to the benefit of saving somebody's life, whatever, by having them wake up or become alert, because they hit those rumble strips and they become conscious again, you know what I'm saying?
So you're saying you want.
I would like to recommend that a town council look into it. I mean, people are going to complain one way or the other, but you got to look into it, and if they're going to do repaving already, maybe it's time to look into it to do the repaving. Does the state pay for the repaving?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if they're paying for it.
I mean, I think, what I'd recommend in this instance is we could, we could verify what the state, what their current plan is, and we can let you know. And if there's, you know, if there's changes to that that you're looking to, we could certainly convey them to the.
Right, we need to know whether there is an option. It's, they're state roads, but I recall us having a discussion about it.
Mike, could we, could we also touch base with the, I'm, I'm hearing from, I think the general consensus I'm hearing is that the town's really not in favor of them. So if we are going to consider them, could we also maybe contact the police department and see how many instances, if any, we've had with people driving off the road and crashing due to falling asleep or whatever else? Because if that's not actually a problem, then maybe this is a conversation we don't need to have.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay.
Absolutely.
Look into it all, multiple ways.
Yeah, yeah, see what the, what's the requirement, what's the need.
You can limit it to two sections in that, two seconds. You know what I'm saying? If you're a real populated area, you know, live in there, because they are loud at night.
Yeah, they're loud at night, and again, one of the areas that is unique of Route 22 particularly is that there are a lot of older homes that don't have setbacks that you would have in a traditional home now, which in one way makes it safer if someone's not going to plow into your house, which we've had happen. But in another way, in the, you know, in a regular night, it's going to be pretty loud for folks that are sleeping, you know, if you're 10 feet off the road or so. It gets loud. I've heard personally complaints about it of people that I know that live on 22 that it's, it's very loud, and I can, I can almost hear it from my house as well.
Right, and, and we've got to keep in mind, it's for prevention.
Yes, of course.
Not for, you know, anything else, so it's hard to, it's hard to gauge.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're living on top of one of the main roads, it's certainly not going to be in favor, but, you know, you have to really think as a whole.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but also the argument can be made that if that house is close to the road, you'd want a rumble strip there, because it would wake you up before the person gets to the house.
Yeah, it's definitely.
Yeah, I, I agree. So, okay.
Definitely something to consider. We'll look into it.
I like that. Ron's idea is a good idea, just talk to the police, see what they say.
Get all, get information from all sides. Okay, any other questions before we move on? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item B, Permanent Project Building Committee.
The Police Department EOC Project, the groundwork is continuing, and if you've passed by and you hadn't been distracted entirely by the Poco, you can see across the street that the frame of the building is actually starting to take shape. NBHS Punch List is still being worked. The basement abatement process and demolition is continuing, and the foundation concrete is expected to be poured next week. Stanley T. Williams Community Center, they are continuing work on the punch list items. And North Branford Intermediate School, the NB sign was removed, and building power washed with pretty good results. Re-roofing is expected this month, and after that, the building will be cleaned once again. If you've actually looked at this building, you can, you can just still see the slight outline of it, though it looks vastly improved from what it was. But there will be another cleaning process after that, which should eliminate that.
And then they'll put the sign, the NB sign back up?
They're holding it right now until it's determined.
Well, it has to be fixed.
Yeah, it has to be fixed.
First, which the sign maker is doing it at no cost.
Correct.
But then I think they have to wait until the whole project is done and.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some sense out there that because of the way the new campus looks, it doesn't necessarily fit in. If that's what is ultimately determined.
I like it.
You know, the, the sign can go back, or it can be used somewhere else, whatever, whatever the pleasure is.
Okay. All right. Thank you, appreciate it. Item nine, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Let me ask those, did you come up? State your name.
I'll check my ID.
Thank you.
You expecting Scott tonight? Flip Potter, Northford, Middletown Avenue. Last week, you mentioned, or the town manager mentioned, we had a significant power outage up in Northford. And it's also been brought to kind of via Channel 8's. Wallingford Electric is not keeping their lineman. I don't know if there's a management issue or what, but they're down to less than half of what they need. They need 13 or 14. They've only got supposedly, according to what I just found out, about eight. That affects us. We've been lucky, they do keep up with what they do, but I, I'm wondering, long term, have you heard anything from the Wallingford people at all? Or, because they do service our town, do we have any input? Again, sort of like the dog pound.
I've heard that they have backup that.
Is it the UI? Because that scares me.
No, it's not UI, it's another, they use local 442s.
Oh, okay.
Subcontract, that subcontract in, and our linesman will come in.
All right, I mean, I'm just, I'll do anything to, or write a letter or something. I don't want to lose Wallingford Electric.
Because you're well aware, Wallingford Electric is an absolute gem to have.
Oh, yeah, and with the new police station going to be on Wallingford Electric and everything else, well, of course, we got generated backup for them. But it's, it's kind of, the way it came about was also the state won't cut the dead trees. So that's, that corridor is going to sit there and have, you know, biweekly, we're going to have power problems, those trees on that hill are dead. And I guess Willie Delacamera was questioning, why do, why do you wait till the trees fall down to cut them? Well, it's overtime, for one thing, and, you know, we, we need them to be more proactive. If you look in that alley, it's happened more than it's, a lot of outages up that way. But I was just wondering why they have gone so low on their, their personnel. But you do say they do have a.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the parameters around their hiring practices or.
I don't know either, although I'm aware that they, they prefer hiring apprentice linemen and, and more of them, and as the apprentices get higher level and skill, they, they move, they move on. That's, you know, what I'm, what I'm aware of, but I'm not.
You know, it's, it's a Wallingford issue, but it's also a Northford issue. So I'm just curious, if you, people have been in the loop, has it reached a dangerous proportion? Because come winter, I mean, they're down to basically one or two crews.
Right, it could be a business, a business decision where they subcontract it out to the contractors, like from local 442s. Many companies, you know, I ever see on the storms, you'll see the trucks going down the road, you know, all different companies, that's what that is.
Yeah, it's Darrell, Darrell, and Darrell. You know, hey, you hold the ladder up against that high tension wire.
There's lots of theories that we learn or tend to learn on online applications, we'll just say. They're not all valid theories or.
But it's just something, you know, they've been so good to us, we've taken for granted. Now I see they're, you know, having personnel problems. I'm concerned, because there was a rumor UI was going to take them over, and that got squashed. And luckily, let's hope that all of them get squashed, because I like that little bill. Thank you.
Me too. Thank you, appreciate that. I think we all in Northford Section appreciate what Wallingford Electric does.
I have to add, I mean, in the 39 years I lived in town in Northford, I can't remember that I ever lost power overnight.
You know you're jinxing yourself right now, right?
It was for several hours, I can't remember if I was losing it.
You let us know when the power's out for a week, we'll bring stuff over from your freezer to ours, since you jinxed yourself. All right, any other citizen statements, petitions, or correspondence? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Potter, we appreciate it, we always enjoy your candor. Okay, Item 10, Resignations and Appointments. Item A, Appointment of Jeff Hanran as an alternate to the Economic Development Commission, term to expire 12/31/2024.
So who?
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampaño. Any discussion?
I would just, I would just like to add that I think he's going to be a great asset to that committee.
That's great.
I think he has a lot to offer.
And that's a very important committee, as you well know, where we've put a lot of emphasis on what that committee's going to be doing. I know Rory is going to be helping out tremendously there. It's, it's going to be the backbone of what we build here in North Branford to develop our economic essence per se. So thank you for that. We have any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you very much. Jeff, we appreciate you joining on to that committee. Item B, Appointments, the Blueprint Committee. I think there's going to be some changes to this, if you want to make some motions.
So I, I believe in the original, when we adopted the, I guess, the formation of the Blueprint Committee and the makeup of it, under town residents, we had one resident from Northford and one resident from North Branford. And in discussing this, we would like to amend that so that we have an alternate, that we appoint an alternate from each side of town, from Northford. And so I would like to make a motion that, under the makeup of the committee, that we add that there's one alternate from Northford and one alternate from North Branford.
Motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Mace. Thank you, sir. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you. All right, and then I think we have some appointments to make.
Okay, so in last month's meeting, we all had the hard copy of the list of people that have put their names forth from Northford and North Branford. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Matt Fleming as the regular member from Northford, and Melinda Fonda as the alternate. And from North Branford, Bonnie Samansky as the regular, and Christopher Hian as the alternate.
Second. All right, motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by. Okay. By Sir Abelson. All right, winner is Bruce Abelson. All right, so the winner of that second is Bruce Abelson for all count. Any discussion?
No.
All right, seeing none, and sharing the second, I appreciate that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you very much. All right, so the goal of this committee is to get them to formulate as quick as possible.
Well, I don't think we've appointed council members yet.
We have to do that, we can do that now.
Well, I mean, in order to get this off the ground, I think you need a full committee.
Yes, of course, of course.
Because otherwise, we will just be sitting there and.
So let's, let's do that, let's appoint council members as well.
So who's, who's interested from the council?
Show your hands.
I am. I thought you were too.
Well, let's see if others want to get in, before I get involved, let's see if someone else.
Aren't you automatically?
I'm, well, as of right now, as mayor, I am ex officio, but that could change, so. But you will have Bruce as one, and there should be, I think there was two?
Yes, there are two council members.
Nobody wants to.
Any other hands?
If no one else wants it, you go ahead and take as a voting member, even though you're ex officio, and I know you want it to be on it.
Yeah, I would, I would be interested in the department.
Nobody else wants to do this.
Because you're always going to, you may not have a vote, but you have a voice.
Yes, again, only as, as mayor. If I'm, there, we are in an election year.
Are you planning on losing?
I don't know, see? I'd like to, but, you know, there could be other sessions, you know?
Yeah, I'll volunteer.
Okay, there we are. Deputy Mayor Zampaño will volunteer. Okay. Okay, so.
So I make a motion to appoint as Town Council Representatives Deputy Mayor Zampaño and Counselor Abelson.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you very much. All right, making things happen today. All right, Item 11, unfinished business discussion.
Before we continue, who's going to get that meeting started? Who's going to actually?
Well, we're going to talk, we'll get, we'll talk with Mike, and we'll see about getting communication.
Starting?
Well, no, you're going to, somebody has to.
The goal is to get that, you're right, actually, I was going to bring this up. So the goal is to get it going pretty quickly, because we'd like to have something back by March.
Well, you have to, according to what we approved.
Of course, by our, our.
Somebody has to get it organized.
You'll have to convene an organizational meeting, and at that point, the committee will determine its own schedule.
Correct.
And set its meetings.
Yeah, so.
And select a chair.
Correct, yeah, select a chair.
They have to select a chair, and then that's where it all, and according to the directory, naturally, it all starts.
So we'll look and see what times or slots are open. My guess is it'll likely meet here, since it's a sizable committee, and see what days that this particular spot is open. We know Mondays, there's a five-hour meeting every Monday for Permanent Project Committee.
What's the total number of people on, on this? So we got two?
Uh, there's, let's see, there's four.
There's three from committees that we already appointed, and then two from the council, it's five. And then two.
Nine.
And then, yeah, two ex officios.
Right, so what we probably should do is have it in a, in a room similar to Mike's room. It, it's difficult to have that kind of meeting, I think, in, in this, in this layout. Because it's, it's, right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you could do that in, in the, in the office.
Yeah, I, I would say, so it's easier to have a communication.
That's fine.
Plus, you have a whiteboard in there.
I agree, I actually do.
That we can see.
I got two.
I agree with that.
Two, yeah.
That's a good, that's a good, that's a good point. That's a good, that's a good point. The whiteboard does make it a lot easier to whiteboard things. Okay, so then as long as you're okay with us.
Of course.
Utilizing that area, why don't we look to see what days this could be open? And we'll come up with when that would be.
You're probably gonna do this, but I would hope that we would notify the people that were appointed, at least to let them know that someone's been appointed. Thank them for volunteering.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll send them a letter.
We will do that. We'll send a letter out. Yeah, and that's not to say that this won't expand in the future. We want those people that have raised their hand to know that we appreciate their, them raising their hand and we hope they get involved in other areas and even, you know, be part of as this builds and turns into something more, I'm sure there'll be other options.
It's gonna have a letter come from the council, but it is an election year, so I'll just send it for you. Thank you.
Now that this will bring the meeting to form. After it gets started, there may be some people that say, this isn't for me. I'm dropping off. How are they going to be replaced? Has that already been decided or does this committee have to decide how replacements?
I think we'll replace with our, because it's been, because it is the life of the council to put this together, it will come back to the council for that. And that's viable. That's gonna happen. People, schedules are gonna change, opportunities are gonna change. Yeah.
Because it happens with the other.
You never know. Tom might not be here. He might move to another town.
I know, you know?
Are you planning on moving? You said down to New York.
Well, I mean, I didn't see the real tour at his house, but I saw the car.
Don't worry about it. If I resign, I'm gonna ask you to be on it.
Bruce is stuck here. Yeah, they won't let him. There's not a lot of other towns, so.
No, I'm not.
He's gotta stay. But, no, so yeah, as things change, it'll come back to the council and we'll do the same thing and we'll ask for people to volunteer and.
Well, because they said they have to have their first report by March of next year. So that gives them now to December to get organized and figure out what they're going to do and report back in March, what their plan is for here.
Actually till November.
So we have to get it going. That's why we wanted to get this voted as quick as possible. Okay, any other questions? Okey-dokey. All right, moving on, on to unfinished business. Item B, request of, I'm sorry, yeah, request of hazardous waste and recycling committee.
Oh, now there's A.
Oh, missed A, of course, yeah. I overchecked. Okay, A, creation of the 1831 Committee. And we're not there yet, so we're gonna pass by this. That's why I overchecked it.
We have the account, right? We started an account.
We have the account.
Yep, that's been taken care of.
Okay, good. Any other questions before we move on from there? Okay, item B, request of hazardous waste and recycling committee.
So I have a new memo before you that I sent out to the council. It's also before you here at your desks. This is just a re-encapsulation of what hazardous waste requested of you at the last meeting. Those were essentially being able to use the NIP fund made available from the state for a part-time trash picker, A-frame signs, inserts in the Totaka Times and reimbursement for mileage for volunteers. So if you were amenable to that, I do have a suggested motion on the second page for the first three. And then I have a memorandum from Finance Director Esposito relative to doing the mileage reimbursement on the third page of this document with a motion there as well.
Okay, so I'll just make the motions so we can discuss here. Be it hereby resolved that the North Bramford Town Council authorizes the Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee to draw on the town's NIP fund for the following expenses for the amounts indicated. $11,628 annually for the hiring of a part-time roadside litter collector to be overseen by Public Works. An amount not to exceed $450 for the purchase of A-frame signs to promote recycling events. $600 annually for inserts in the Totaka Times to promote waste collection and recycling.
All right, we have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion?
Hey, just have one question on this item three. Wasn't there some question as to with the publishing, if that fell under, if that was gonna be okay with the grant?
The initial question on that was, the way it was, the way the request had been conveyed to me originally was that they were looking to do it as a means of supporting the Totaka Times as opposed to necessarily promoting them. Because they're given free ad space in the Totaka Times, but they modified that request to reflect they wanted to put inserts in the Totaka Times.
Which sounds good, but that covers it under the grant?
It does, yeah.
So I have a question in regards to this, the hiring of the part-time person. Will there always be enough money in the NIP fund to pay this person?
People like NIPS.
Great question.
Well, I don't, I mean, because I don't know how much a year we get.
We got 23, 23,000 in the fund.
Well, that's the starting amount, but do we get 23,000 every year?
Yeah, I mean, you could set it for just one year and then renew this if you wished to annually. Because you're right, we don't know what we will get from the NIP fund.
Is this the first year we've gotten it?
I think I know the stress there.
Yes, it will start in the 22, 23 year, but we're in the second year now.
Second year, yep.
So have we received the funding for this year yet? How many years funding is the 23,000? We've only got one, they've only funded once?
They base it on different alcohol distributors. So if vendor A has to give us X amount based on the number of NIPS he sold, vendor B gives us a piece. They have a whole schedule throughout the entire state or town by the vendor of the alcohol. So as that vendor squares up with the state, we get his piece. And then the next vendor squares up, we get their piece. So it comes in multiple pieces. It's not one number. So we're, you know, we get this year, last year's, basically, right? I believe it's in a year, yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
This only covers for two years. So this is really for two years. 23, 24, and 25. And then in 25, we have to reevaluate it.
Right. I just don't want it to be so that like it's a permanent part-time position because if there's not funding for it, then so do we have to add something to the motion to that effect?
I would say you'd strike the annually and say specify that it is for this fiscal year because there's a timeframe that was that they enumerated out there, March 15th to November. So I would say that that would be effective for this coming March. Well, we're in March now, but they wanna do it to November, so actually I'm not really sure when they wanna start them, if they wanna start in mid-cycle here or.
Brian, can we just call it a temporary part-time position? Would that fit the bill?
Or you can just take, I like, if you take out the word annually, I think that works even easier. $11,600 for the hiring of a. And that would presuppose it's gonna be a temporary. That's the only amount of money. Or you could say temporary for the hiring of a temporary. I would take the word annually out if you're not gonna make this a recurring position.
Okay.
If it doesn't, if you take it out, but does it cause a problem if they don't get to the 11,000 annually?
Well, if we take out annually, then it's, so they put a timeframe of March to November. So we're already past March of this year. So by the time they would hire, so this year, technically you might get from, let's say, August 15th to November 15th, that you might only have three months. And then it wouldn't pick up until next March again.
And maybe the way to say it is to pay them at a rate of $17 an hour for the time period indicated. That way you don't have to worry about the total amount, right?
The total amount.
But we're only covering, we're only covering for a year at this rate. If there's $23,000 in there, that's two years. Right? So we're actually not, so we're, like I said, we're covering it for 23, 24, and to 25. We, next year, when it comes back up, we'll have a pretty good idea of what's gonna be in the fund. We're gonna do it from 25 to 26 and 27. Because we're covering for two years, yes? Because we're getting $23,000.
Well, it'll vary, but if NIP sales continue strong, then
Which they have.
Then 23 might be our number.
But that's what, but that's the whole thing, is we'll be able to, this covers for two years right now. And then we have to reassess it next year of what the NIP fund is and then move forward. Because we're only, we're only doing 11,600, plus $600, whatever. We're spending what, $12,500? But we're getting 23. Where's the other nine?
Right, we would just have to make sure that we keep on record that we've allocated the fund, basically.
Right. And then there's some gonna be left over.
So you can't spend it somewhere else, you know?
Right.
Can it be spent somewhere else?
Only for, only for the things that are itemized in state statute.
Which is, which is what they're covering here. Plus, well, they also wanna take out the mileage from the NIP fund. And mileage could, you know, be 5,000 plus a year.
Well, he drives about 100 miles.
I think we revisit this on an annual basis so that we can.
So, yeah, I'll just modify it so rather than.
Seasonally, we should do it. Like, the season's gonna end November 15th and next year will be the next season.
Seasonal.
That actually works.
So I'm just gonna modify to take out the 11,600. We'll just put the hourly rate in there for the time period specified of March 15th to November 15th.
Can I make a recommendation? I think Tom Conville's okay to take out annually. Can we change annually to seasonal? Like Tom just recommended? Because if it's seasonal, then you know from March to November, it's not a yearly event. It's a seasonal event. And that would cover that. And also, there's $23,000 in there, but at $17 an hour, it would currently, according to the maker of this year report, it's $11,628 for this year from March to November. And that would have to also include the cost for the sign for $450 for the advertising that it is. So Brian, what do you think about changing annual to seasonal? Instead of being.
Or you could just put in the amount, that amount for the hiring of a part-time roadside litter collector.
I was just gonna do the hourly rate.
Simple, because maybe you wanna run this year after November. It would be good. Give you some flexibility. Maybe you wanna start before March.
Well, no, because.
Take the advice of our town attorney. All right, so how would you wanna word that? So we can word it as.
Just say 11,628 for the hiring of a part-time. Leave it at that. Then if you're running low on money or out, you can come back and revisit. Do we wanna hire a person again? Do we wanna buy a piece of equipment? Do we want a subcontract? There's a number of things you could spend money on under that public act. So this is just, you know, this is almost a test program. I just see how this works for you folks.
For a recommendation, Rose, $11,628 divided by $17 an hour gives you 684 hours of reward.
Well, it's not, it's not to exceed 19 hours a week. They have to stay under the 19 hours a week according to the thing, because then you get into the whole benefit thing. So that was part of their proposal to us.
Right. You have a question for Fran?
Fran and Dan, is this manageable for you guys?
Yep, they don't need a big help.
Just making sure, just making sure we're not tossing something your way that's.
This becomes a whole new revenue stream for us, which is supporting NIP sales. And here we are, getting all sorts of things.
So I would like to amend the motion so that item one reads $11,628 for the hiring of a temporary part-time roadside litter collector to be overseen by Public Works.
Okay, so the motion has been amended by Councilor Angeloni, I believe the second was. Okay, Councilor Paladino has seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I thought we were changing it to an hourly rate.
Well, they went back to the 11,000.
Yeah, I leave a flat amount because remember, your hourly rate is what the employee gets. I'm sure as Anthony can tell you, there's additional.
Okay, all right, all right. Just let me try, I sort of, I missed that part.
The amount of, not just your withholding, but the town share of certain things.
Right.
I think that would be included in the 11,628.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Obstained? Okay. All right, got that going. Continue your NIP consumption. We're good.
Well, there's one other motion and it's for the gas.
Gas.
So, so what's the rate right now? 60?
65 cents?
65. 0655.
Okay, 65 and a half cents. 100 miles a week roughly, but there's two of them. So that's really 200 miles roughly a week. So you're at $130 a week. Times, times, well, it's only, but they collect, see, they collect the plastic all year round, not just March to November. So now you're at 52 weeks. So if you say 50 weeks times the.
Come on, come on. What is it?
130 would be 6,500.
You're close. 68.
Why, did 50 weeks, not 52?
Oh, okay.
Considering that they might be on vacation.
Okay.
Okay.
Get you everyone a calculator so we can figure this out.
It's right here.
Here's that 23,000.
Well, that's what I'm saying is that between the person, the gas, the $600 and the 450.
Let's go, mom.
It's not that you're financing it for two years. You're not financing the position. You wouldn't have the money. So. All right, I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved that effective July 1st, 2023, the North Bramford Town Council authorizes the use of the NIP's fund proceeds to reimburse members of the Solid Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee for their mileage to drive around town picking up film from the various collection sites. Mileage forms must be submitted to their liaison, Assistant Public Works Director Dan Salantano for approval and entering into the accounts payable process.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion?
One more question. I think I kinda asked this last time. They're gonna be using their own vehicles?
Correct, yes.
So how would that work as far as insurance and stuff, if something, God forbid, was bad to happen?
It's on their own insurance.
It's all on, it's all on, never put it back on us.
It would be on their insurance.
On their insurance, but.
So do we, do we want them to provide proof of insurance?
I believe that might make sense.
It would have to be, it would have to be, the number would have to be pretty high, though, I would think. I mean, gosh, if they were to hit somebody while working for the town.
They're not working for the town, though, right? I mean.
They're not an employee. There's someone who's getting mileage reimbursed for volunteer services, essentially.
However, I disagree with you.
So is there, is there?
How are they volunteering if they're getting paid?
They're only getting.
They're only getting reimbursed for mileage, but that's.
But they're getting paid hourly.
No, they're, no, no, this is different. This is different.
That's a different person.
They've been doing it all along anyway. Didn't we ever require insurance? Well, because they weren't getting paid, though. They weren't getting, they weren't getting reimbursed mileage.
The reason I ask is, God forbid, they were doing this and somebody was to get killed. They're driving around, they hit somebody. And now they don't have the right amount of insurance or they're gonna be able to come after us.
That's why I would get certificates of insurance from them.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to require certificate of insurance.
So the risk to the town is low?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the?
On the flip side of that, Brian, what if, I was thinking about this earlier. What if, you know, we have some busy roads, 2280, everything else, right? If they're out picking up stuff on the side of the road and they get hit.
They're not, though. It's my understanding these are the folks going to the recycling center.
They're just moving from place to place.
Taking on the plastic stuff that they don't accept in recycling and bringing it somewhere else in their cars.
Correct.
But just keep in mind, some people get insurance and then they don't pay the premiums after that. There's insurance lapse, so.
So we'd have to get, we have a provision in there, they'd have to put it, there's a provision you put in the insurance policies with the carrier that the town is notified of cancellation of the policy. We have that automatically in all the insurance certificates we get to protect exactly that scenario.
They also have to provide the COI every year. It's required.
Yeah, that's great.
We require notice. We require the policies to provide notice to the town of anyone who we make have vehicle insurance or any insurance for that matter, any of our vendors, contractors. And if there is a cancellation, the town gets noticed. We can terminate our relationship with the person or make them get new insurance.
So do we wanna put that into the motion? Or are we just?
I think that'll just be handled administratively.
Okay, that's fine.
I didn't know that number.
Thank you, Brian.
To answer Ross's question, the employees would be, you know, the people that aren't picking up on the side of the road, that is obviously a risk.
The employees, the capacity, they would be on our work cancellation policy. Should something, God forbid, happen to them.
Now likewise, if they caused an accident by whatever, changed stuff in front of a car that spurs it against another car, we'd have liability for it. Like any other public works employee.
Do the volunteers or do they file some sort of a release for the town or is, how does that work?
The people picking up the trash, the people picking up?
The film?
The film and stuff like that. I mean.
They could do a release, you know.
I'm not saying we should or shouldn't. I'm just asking the question.
Lots of the details of that, yeah, really brought that out, how we're doing that. Is there really just volunteer committee members that we're just reimbursing some of their?
Yeah, I just didn't know if the town had like a standard volunteer release or.
So would it be similar to the liability waiver that we use for the POCO?
Yeah, that number you have signed already for the POCO.
So could we?
Rose did Strongarm you earlier.
They all wanted you to review it, but the town attorney did review those forms for us.
I reviewed it, I mean, not for the town, not you individually. The town is very protected.
There's some, some small language in there, Brian. I agree. And Rose hand ripped into it.
Remember that contract that Willie walked through?
Yeah. Yeah. And like a Snosbury. Yeah, I know all about that, trust me. I'm not falling in that, that river of chocolate. Okay, are we good? Are we ready to move on here? Okay, NIP sales, keep them going.
Okay, so the motion was made.
Okay, motion was made, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano from remembering. There was any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Obstained? Thank you. Okay, on to item C, award of RFP 923002 ambulance NBFD Company Ford. It was tabled on 7/18/2023 and it's tabled back here. Tabled again? Thank you, chief. Appreciate that. Okay, item 12, and northern new business, just discussion in action. Item A, generator contract with Verizon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is the generator use agreement that we discussed actually at the last meeting. It came in like the Friday late night before the council meeting that you had last time and we weren't able to get it on the agenda as a result of that because it was a special meeting. But it's before you tonight. This is, of course, in relation to the 222 Clintonville Road Tower. And it's been reviewed by the town attorney. And it's given his blessing. It's before you now, tonight.
I would like to make a motion that North Bramford Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager, my vote, cooldowns to sign the attached generator use contract agreement on behalf of the town of North Bramford.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Couldn't hear that real well. Any discussion?
I'm just happy to finally see that in writing.
Yes, agreed. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you. Onto item B, reestablish new public hearing date for Tuesday, September fifth, at seven thirty PM regarding designation, uh, designating the town of North Branford as a rehabilitation area and establishing criteria for the eligibility of real property, assessment, deferral, and administrative procedures.
For this item, I'll bring Assistant Town Manager Rory Burke up.
Mr. Burke?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, so this is the same item that was on your last agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the statute, uh, that governs this program requires two publications at fixed intervals. Uh, the newspaper that we use to publish notices only publishes weekly, so it was not possible to get it done in time. Uh, so this would allow us the time to publish the required notices, basically.
Okay. Uh, that seems to make sense. This, again, this is not something, it's something that sunsetted. It's not something we stopped. It's something that sunsetted. And we're now reestablishing to make sure that it takes place. All right, so is there?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Well, there's a motion.
There's a motion, of course.
So I'd like to make a motion that the town council set a public hearing for Tuesday, September fifth, at seven thirty PM regarding designating the town of North Branford as a rehabilitation area and establishing criteria for the eligibility of real property for assessment, deferral, and administrative procedures. Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano.
I think it was Councilor Angelo that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. It's Councilor Angelo. You're right. It was most definitely Councilor Angelo. And I think I had Deputy Mayor Zampano. My apologies. Uh, is there any?
Well, I just wanted it right in the minutes.
Nope, that's true. That's true. Thank you. Kathleen appreciates that clarity.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Quick synopsis, what is this? Just.
What do you say?
I don't understand it.
This is the assessment deferral program that the town had.
You've been at a few meetings, we've had them.
I was probably.
Just, just a re, a good little reboot.
Uh, you know, it, it functions as an incentive program for development. It allows the town to freeze the assessment of a property during and after construction to help, uh, spur development.
Okay. That's a quick synopsis. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
We're good.
All right, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you very much. Onto item C, appropriation transfer. Anthony?
Yes, sir.
You have one of these. You gotta turn it because the page doesn't turn.
You can actually, there is a way to turn it, but I.
Not just, I, I don't know. I've tried every. You can't do it on this either.
Yeah.
Page thirty, thirty-four in the.
I can help you.
Cam. Uh, some of the items, uh, transfers, uh, starting at the top, you'll remember the discussion at budget time. The police chief talked about the overtime for those risk protection orders. Uh, that went over. Uh, you remember in the communications, next one down, there was the conversion of the, it used to be four and a half dispatchers. We made five full-time dispatchers now. Uh, that resulted in the shortfall there. Uh, some of the, the reasons that we have money to cover. Obviously, we took advantage of the, the mild winter and saved on other contractual, hiring other, other outside plowers. Uh, retirement contributions goes back to the longstanding discussion about the, uh, police pension. Uh, for Public Works at the bottom, you'll see the, uh, transfer to a new truck for Public Works as well as the small tool account. And also there was that one that was discussed last time, and Director Maroll is here if you wanna ask any questions about that. Uh, new office design that we talked about last time. Uh, this is basically to, to start a seed project to, kinda ties into the blueprint committee as to, he needs more office space. Where does it go? What's the most advantageous way to accommodate that? And this would be a, a space needs type work and develop a game plan that could be used to marry up with the blueprint committee to provide the appropriate space that he needs for the operation over there. Any other questions? I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
I have none.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, transfers as presented.
All right, a motion, motion by Councilor Angelo and seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Onto item D, contingency transfers, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
Yes, the last one was twenty-two, twenty-three. This is a current year, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, that was, I believe, a number that was given to the manager to use for that purpose, for the administrator merit increases.
And this was before the finance committee at the last meeting.
Correct.
Right. I make a motion to approve, uh, the appropriation from contingency for administrative merit increases, sixty thousand. Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Angelo, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Okay. Onto item thirteen, citizen statements and petitions. Are there any? Anthony, anything online?
Standby.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, no.
Okay, we'll move on. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Angelo, seconded by Deputy, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? We're adjourned eight twenty-two PM. Thank you. Have a great night, everyone. Hope to see everyone at POCO. Enjoy it.